I call to order the Rosemont Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, February 25th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
Madam Chair, there's one change staff would like to make to the agenda, and that would be to move the request by Danner for its small-scale mineral extraction permit to the public hearing section due to the fact that while it was continued, a public hearing was never opened for that item.
Okay. So we will move the item of the request by Danner from Old Business to public hearing, and that will become Item A under public hearing, and the request by Riveter Real Estate will become Item B under the public hearing section. Any other additions to the agenda?
Madam Chair, there are not.
Okay, thank you. At this time, there is time for audience input. Before I invite anyone in the audience to speak, this will be on items that are not on tonight's agenda. The request by Magellan Land Development is on tonight's agenda under Old Business. The public hearing has been closed on this item, but after the staff report, we will allow 15 minutes of public comment. So those of you that may be in the audience tonight for that item, you will have an opportunity during the -- after the staff report, we will allow 15 minutes for public comment at that time on this item. So with that, I will ask if there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the commission on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward to the consent agenda. There any comments from the commission on the consent agenda? I did have one edit at the consent agenda. On page four, there is a motion that I made to close a public hearing, and it didn't specify that that was what the motion is for. So Liz, did you -- Liz has corrected that already. So with that, any other comments on the consent agenda? Okay, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the modification to page four to specify what the motion was pertaining to.
Second?
It's been moved by Commissioner Keniger, seconded by Commissioner Ellis. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we will move on to our Old Business section, and the one item under Old Business this evening is the request by Magellan Land Development for approval of rezoning from A2 agricultural to R2 low-to-medium-density residential and a preliminary plat to develop 58 townhomes. And Julia, I will turn it back over to you.
All right. All right, I know the commission saw this at their previous January 28th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting, so I'll kind of go an overview of what the commission saw last time, and then also additional updates as well. So a little overview of the project summary. So the applicant is requesting a rezone and preliminary plat approval to develop 58 townhome units on a 10-acre site located east of Akron Avenue and north of Bonner Path. The applicant is requesting the site be rezoned from R2 agricultural to -- or A2 agricultural to R2 low-to-medium-density residential. So a little overview of the site location. Like I had mentioned, the property is located directly east of Akron Avenue and about a half-mile north of Bonner Path. It is located east of Carmore Crossing and also north of Flynn Hills Recreational Complex. There is Flynn Hills Resources land directly east of the property, and then also land owned by the state of Minnesota to the north. So a little overview of the rezoning requests. So the applicant is requesting the site be rezoned from R2 agricultural to R2 -- A2 agricultural to R2 low-to-medium-density residential. The R2 zoning district is an allowed secondary zoning district under the LDR, Low Density Residential Land Use Designation, which this property is designated for LDR in the city's future land use map. So a little overview of that as well. So the city's future land use map was adopted alongside the city's 2040 Comprehensive Plan back in 2020. The map does assign planned land use types to all parcels within the community to guide current and future planning and development through the -- to the year of 2040. And it's the official land use designation map of the city. Any new development, redevelopment, change in land use, or change in zoning is required to be consistent with the official land use guidance for each parcel. So like I had mentioned, this site is designated for low-density residential, which the R2 zoning district does fall under that land use designation. The LDR land use designation also allows for housing density for up to six units per acre, which this project does meet that requirement as well. So a little overview of the site plan. So the site is 10 acres in size, and the proposed density for the site is six units per acre. 58 townhome units are proposed throughout the site with a mixture of four to six units per building. There's about 12 buildings throughout the site. The site will be accessed by a single public street that extends east off of -- east and then also south off of Akron Avenue, which you can see on the site plan shown on the right-hand side. Private road is shown to extend east to give access to the townhomes throughout the site, and then also three private drives shown to extend south of that main road as well to give access to some of those buildings on-site. There are also two stormwater management areas on the site, which you can see is located on the extreme east end of the site, and then also on the west end of the site near that public road. The first phase of development will also consist of the public access road, main private road, both stormwater ponding areas, and 30 townhome units. The second phase will be the remaining 28 townhome units, and then also the three private drives that extend off that main private road. Again, a little more overview of that street and access. So the one access road shown in the preliminary plat area does extend off of Akron Avenue to the east, and the road is shown to be public, extends south to the southern property line for future development to the south. There is a total of 29 guest parking stalls provided on-site, which does meet that minimum guest parking requirement that is required. And there are also five-foot sidewalks shown along the southern portion of the main private road and along the southeastern portion of the roadway off of Akron as well. So a little overview of the parks and open space and as well as the landscape plan. So the Parks and Recreation Department did review plans of this project and is recommending that an eight-foot-wide trail be benched on the west side of the development along Akron Avenue, which you can also see on this plan shown here on the west-hand side. Also, since the city is not looking to acquire parkland within this development, parkland dedication is being required in Cashin Lou, which is about $165,300 as a condition as part of this approval. Little overview of the landscape plan. So the landscape plan does show a total of 226 trees to be planted throughout the site. Some existing trees do need to be removed from the site to accommodate the proposed development. The landscape plan does show the required amount of caliber inches that need to be replaced. Trees are shown to be located, you can see throughout the whole site, acting as a buffer on the north-hand side of the property as well as the southern side, and also shown throughout different areas and open space and along the west side of the stormwater management area. Trees aren't able to be planted on the eastern side due to some of the pipelines located on that eastern side of the property. Landscape surety in the amount of $74,580 is also required as a condition of approval. So a little overview of some of the architectural rendering shown for the site. So like the applicant has stated prior, it does have a look of single-family homes with this -- of single-family detached homes with the same height similar to that, and they will be for sale townhomes as well. So update since the last Planning Commission meeting. So a public hearing was held for the requested rezoning and preliminary plat at the January 28th Planning Commission meeting. After the public hearing portion, additional discussion among the commission, it was approved to continue this item until the February meeting to give the applicant additional time to explore pedestrian safety concerns. So the applicant notified the city that they did reach out to both Dakota County and Flynn Hills Resources regarding pedestrian access. So Flynn Hills did respond back to the applicant and said they would need to conduct significant additional research before allowing for pedestrian access on their land, as there are pipelines and other easement areas in that area, east, directly east of the site, as you can see on the map shown over here. And then Dakota County did state that the county did not have any current projects programmed in their five-year capital improvement plan to add a trail along the east side of Akron Avenue in the -- near the subject parcel. But at this time, staff is recommending two motions. They are recommending to motion, City Council approve a zoning map amendment to rezone the site from A2 agricultural to R2 low-to-medium-density residential, and then also to motion to recommend the City Council approve the preliminary plat for Akron Ridge, subject to conditions A through H. Staff is here as well as our Parks and Recreation Director. If the commission does have additional questions, the applicant is here as well. But at this time, I can answer any questions that the commission may have.
Thank you, Julia. Are there any questions that the commission has right now for Julia before we open up public comment?
I've got one. Can you just clarify, the -- one of the recommendations was an eight-foot-wide path to be benched in. Can you explain that a little bit more and timing?
Yeah, and I know that our Parks and Recreation Director can kind of speak on that a little more, but as part of the memo that they provided for us, they are requiring that that be benched in so that a trail connection can be expanded upon when development occurs further south so that that can connect to that trail to the south as well.
Okay, but the trail would end at the southern end of the property there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Until development further occurs to the south.
Commissioner Reed, just a point of clarification. That terminology basically is saying it must be graded for a trail, but not actually constructed.
Yeah. Any other questions at this time? Yes, Commissioner Whitman?
And on that issue, that was -- that wasn't something that was updated, was it? That was -- that was last time.
Correct, yes. That was part of the original review.
Thank you for understanding. I stumbled through words. Question there.
Okay. At this time, we will open up -- not open up the public hearing, because it's not, but we will allow public comment for the next 15 minutes here if there are --
Can we hear from the Parks and Recreation Director about some of the questions that were made last time about the fencing and stuff on the north end of the park?
Absolutely, we can do that first.
Can we do that first before we open for a public hearing? That way, if we can...
Yep.
That was my question too.
Right.
Dan, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Well, thank you, commissioners, Madam Chair and commissioners. So I had a couple of questions that were asked of me with regards to the development of this property and kind of some of the timing and some of the comments that were made at the last meeting. Keep in mind that the city purchased this, or actually didn't purchase this, it was donated to the city by Flynn Hills, this property, back in 2007. So we've had it kind of a long time. We've been working slowly to develop it as we've had money to do so. The original plan for this was to have baseball and softball fields on the north end and soccer fields in the south end. Once we saw some of the trends that were happening with lacrosse and things like that, we decided to make the whole thing green space. And that allowed us to slide some of the fields south on the property to move away from some issues with topography and things like that on the north end. As far as the fence goes on the north end, I don't recall ever talking to the resident to the north, other than this past fall, when we were putting in some trails about some concerns over residents maybe entering onto their property either via the trail or just from the park in general. I think the city's stance on putting up trails or putting up fences along properties that are between a city property and a residential private property, we typically don't do that. We have 700 acres of property. We've never done that before. I think what we are willing to do is look at issues that are coming up. If we start to see a footpath that maybe is being created by people walking from the park into someone's property, we will try and address that with the landowner, with our Public Works Department, whether that's maybe a split rail of, you know, 20 or 30 feet with some landscaping and things like that. We're willing to look at that. That's what I talked to the landowner about this past fall. As far as the trail, I think Commissioner had a good question about, you know, what is benching in a trail. So benching in a trail is like Anthony had mentioned, it's just really just getting it ready for being built on. So we grade it in, it's graded in as part of the mass grading of the whole site, and I've talked with the developer quite a bit about that, and he's more than willing to make that happen. And we've talked about a small fee in lieu of putting the actual paved trail, and I think we all can probably agree that to drop, you know, an 80- or 120-foot segment of trail that doesn't go anywhere on either end is probably not the best idea for us right now. And so we're looking at building that trail in the future. Because Akron Avenue is a collector, the plan, as you can see right now, is to have some sort of pedestrian facility on both sides. And in this case, we're showing it being a trail on each side of the road. We would plan to extend that up as far as residential development goes for that. That is the plan, and that's why we're asking for them to bench this in and identify where that future trail segment can go. We feel that's important to the future of that area. But in the meantime, if you've been out there and driven on Akron Avenue, there is an eight-foot-wide painted curb line out there. So you'll see a white painted stripe on the side of the road, and then there's eight feet till you get to the edge of the curb. So there is ample space for people to maneuver in that area in the short term. In some instances in town, we actually put bike pedestrians in those lanes and marked them as bike corridors. So I think there is an opportunity for people to move to and from, you know, getting to the Flynn Hills Athletic Complex. I think this, you know, this probably, I know this would not be the first development, maybe that has been built in town where there hasn't been a direct connection made right away. And that's something, even though Dakota County doesn't have it in their five-year CIP, we'll continue to work with them to try to get some kind of a better crossing in that area should this development move forward. I think that's something that the county is always willing to sit down with us and talk about these opportunities where they come up. We've done that over on Bonner Path near Meadows Park and the Bella Vista Greenway. We put in one of those high-vis crossings, and it's been a benefit to the people that live in that area. I've heard from them. We think there's some work we can do over here with Dakota County to make some things happen, so. Were there other specific questions that you wanted me to target?
Does anyone have anything else for Dan? Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Now, all that's really helpful, I think. Just, so the hot topic last time was that neighbor to the north who was stating that if this gets built, there's going to be, you know, potentially more people walking through directly to the park. And he was also stating that there have been people on his property coming from the park or whatever.
Sure.
But it sounds like, and I understand what you're saying, that certainly if there are issues, we'll look at those and we can think about ideas. Maybe a fence, you know, in the future if we see those. But at this point, it sounds to me like, from your perspective anyway, or from what we've seen, there's not enough to justify that construction of the fence now.
I would agree with that statement.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, sorry.
I'll go ahead.
Oh, go ahead. Dan, did you say that the eight-foot pedestrian kind of walkway within, like, I'll say, the side of the road, is that, that is on the east side of the road?
Madam Chair and Commissioner, it's on both sides of the road.
Both sides, okay.
Both sides, correct.
Thank you.
Pretty much the same. So just to confirm, like, that would be their mode of transportation, like, to get to the park if they wanted to walk there?
Yes, that would be my recommendation, Commissioner. I know the area that I live in town, I live near Meadows Park and live not too far from Bonner Path, and if you've been on Bonner Path, I'm sure some of you have, there's about a foot and a half painted curb line on Bonner Path, and it's not something you can walk in, I can tell you that. And that's why we're right now actively preparing to put a trail on the one side, on the south side of Bonner Path. And so I think having that eight feet on both sides does provide some opportunities. I do think that people who are more concerned about, you know, the being on the road closer to traffic, you know, their thought or their option is probably to just maybe cross the street directly across, get on the trail, go to the underpass. And I think, you know, that's a very safe way for people to get over to the park. And now we've added some access points near the entrance to the park. Obviously, there's a lot to do there with a playground. We put a brand-new building in. That building's open nine to nine every day, spring, summer, and fall. We've had no issues with anything over there with, you know, problems with kids or adults or anybody, you know, messing around with the building or anything. And so we think it's a pretty heavily-traveled area. I don't doubt at all that there's been people on the neighbor to the north's property. I know there's a lot of folks in town that, you know, just have that instinct to kind of wander when they see the nice wooded property, but I think with some signage on behalf of the city, working with the landowner, and maybe some additional landscaping, we can definitely try to deter that as much as we can.
And then, I guess, long-term, so eventually, you know, if that other property gets developed and then a trail gets put in, that trail would basically terminate at the property we're talking about, right? Because future plan, I think north was still agriculture for 2040.
Correct. Yep, correct. Okay. Yep. If there ever does become an opportunity south of this property, we would look to engineer a trail in that area. I know at the last meeting, there was some comments made about the challenges to put a trail in there, and that is true. That is not a simple area to just take a look at it and throw down some rock and pave a trail. I mean, it's going to take some grading and some potential retaining walls and things like that, but I know we could engineer it to make it work. But that's, of course, when the opportunity does come up and does arise, if that ever does happen.
Dan, you mentioned that the, it's not in the county's five-year plan, and does that make sense? Because this wasn't a property that was, until now, was looking to be developed, so why would something have been in there?
Yeah.
Five-year plan for that at that point? So maybe down the road, like you mentioned, like, there could be potential because when there's development happening, then they would look at options.
Madam Chair, that's a great comment, because things are happening so fast right now in town with different developments, and you guys see it firsthand. When you're sitting here and you're getting all these proposals and all these things happening, the plans don't always keep up with the pace of development. And so you're exactly right that now that the county, you know, will probably come back out and readdress this, they're in the process of doing their 2050 Comprehensive Park Plan right now, and they were at the Park and Rec Commission meeting last night talking about things just like this, about looking at and identifying improvements that need to be made and things that would go into their capital improvement plan. So I think as soon as this area develops more, I think you'll see more attention from the county.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions?
In regards to that, Flint Hills, kind of the east, maybe putting a trail, it sounded like they needed more time, but if they come back and say you can build a trail on their property, would we do that at that point?
I think we would definitely want to have that conversation with them and pursue that opportunity. That's the one thing that we do have, Commissioner, is an opportunity to work quite a bit with Dakota County. Dakota County does fund probably 60% of the trails that the city does build right now through a Greenway agreement. This might not fall into that, but I think it's something we would definitely want to pursue.
I've seen the applicant has come to the podium. I'm assuming you have a comment?
Jason Palmbeam, Magellan Land Development. To answer your questions regarding Flint Hills, I've had a number of discussions with them about looking at a potential trail back there. Initially, they were open to looking at it, but then as they started to, there's a gas line that runs back there. And to traverse a trail over the top of that is going to raise some flags on how that go, how they go about doing that, which triggers a number of studies in a number of their departments. So it's something that can be looked at, but it's not something that we can hang our hat on that's going to happen immediately if ever because of those gas lines back there, if that helps.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dan before we move on?
Not for him, though, but yeah.
Oh, let's maybe ask applicant questions after we get public.
Yep.
Okay. So at this time, we will open for public comment for the next 15 minutes. We have received the letters that everyone has, that many have sent in. So if you've sent in a letter, it is not necessary to speak unless you have additional information or communication that wasn't included in your letter. So anyone that does want to come forward and speak during this 15 minutes may do so, coming to the podium stating your name and address for the record.
Greg Burgacker, 13080 Akron Avenue. Yes, David, or Dan, you did tell us that you were going to put a fence up there when you first had your meeting, and it was over at the Armory, and you had all your plans laid out. And I asked you, how are you going to keep the people that are coming off the property there out of mine? And you said, oh, we're going to put a fence up there. That's all I have to say. You did say it.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak on this item? Okay, so with that, we will move forward after public comment. I know, Commissioner Reed, you had a question for the applicant?
Yeah, yeah. I'm curious, you know, we've been talking a lot about what the city's going to do in the county and safety measures, and I'm curious from one of the other points that was brought up by the resident there is, you know, just the people wandering through their property. Have you seen or considered anything that you could do with the homeowners association around rules and regulations to maybe put something in requiring the residents not cut through the property, or is that something that you maybe have thought of?
Hi, Emily Becker with MI Homes, 5354 Parkdale Drive, St. Louis Park. That is something we could definitely put in the declaration and rules and regulations to just delineate, you know, this is where the property ends, where the landscaping is that we're going to put in, and just make the residents aware in the declaration. We'd be open to putting up signs as well, too, if the city so choose.
Thank you.
Thank you. I had a couple of things, Julia, that, just from some of these letters, that I wanted to just have you address. There was one comment about children walking to school from this property, and I believe in our previous conversations with the school district that they are planning to bus the majority of these students, so anyone in this neighborhood. Well, it's not within our purview of Planning Commission, but it is my understanding that they would be bused.
Correct.
Okay. And then, there was some comments about the infrastructure capabilities to be able to handle this development. Can you speak to a little bit about that area?
Yeah, there is infrastructure there, obviously. Main Collector Road, Akron Avenue, as well as there are water and sewer capabilities that will be able to be accessed in this site. Obviously, you saw that there will be stormwater on-site to deal with some of the drainage, things that will come up throughout the site. Infrastructure is there within this site, in the site to the south. That's why that, within the city's land use map, that's why it was designated for LDR, Low Density Residential, because that infrastructure is there.
Okay. And with that, infrastructure being there, in terms of traffic, I know there were some comments that we saw about traffic, the road and the design there is built to accommodate this type of traffic?
Correct. And also, all projects that, you know, are adjacent to any county roads do go to the Dakota County Plat Commission for their review, and also any comments that the county may have. There were no traffic concerns from the county, at least during their meeting. Only really the comment from the county was that right-hand turn lane into the site.
Okay.
But otherwise, there were no traffic concerns, as Akron Avenue is made as a collector road and was, you know, constructed to have a high flow of traffic through it, so.
Thank you. I think there was, did you have a question?
No.
No? Okay. Any other questions for Julia and the commission on this item? Are we ready to move forward?
I have a question coming.
Yes, Commissioner Whitman?
I'd like to make a question.
I have a question about the HOA regulations, and then obviously, the applicant's open to doing that. An applicant also stated they're open to doing signs as well. Is that something we can formally put in, you know, somehow? I don't know if it's condition or something, just so it's not just something stated, you know, orally, and then you have to go back and watch the video to see it, you know? It'd be nice to, I guess, put that put that in the record so so we have that moving forward. I don't know how, what's the best?
I think it would fit in the second motion. Would that be an appropriate place to call that out?
Yeah, if the commission sees fit to add a condition in within the preliminary plat approval. It's a good call out, Commissioner Whitman.
So would we be requiring them to work with the city?
No, they're consenting to.
Correct, but that but how are we going to, I mean, if we don't have language for their declaration, and we're just saying, okay, we're going to have them work with the city to put it in signs, I don't know how we can put something here that's going to be?
Well, we could craft language to that.
I think.
I'm sure Adam will give you that in two seconds.
I think a condition just of that the homeowners association documentation would 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 define the the space of, you know, of the development and that residents aren't to trespass on the south neighbor. I mean, I think.
Okay.
I think it can be vague enough for them to then work with the city to to figure out it's the spirit that we that we want to memorialize here, right? That.
Yeah, we won't dictate the language of the declaration, or we won't dictate the length and width of the signs, you know? But we put in there that there will be, you know, in gen just exactly exactly what you just said. We keep it vague enough where they can comply with it in the way that is best and easiest and most cost efficient for the applicant, but also complying with, you know, the state.
Does the job to keep to hopefully keep residents off the neighboring property. Okay, any other comments or questions?
Just to add this comment that, you know, I I think most of my major safety concerns have been answered. I do think it should be a going concern for the city to, you know, work with the county to get a crosswalk there. But, you know, to Dan to Dan's point, Parks Commissioner Dan, you know, there is a wide berth there on the side of the road. And yeah, it's not unusual that we we had residents that have to use that. And if you go further north, some of the rural residential more areas, it's like there's nothing there. So everybody's using the road to walk down and go south. So, you know, I think there's a precedent here that that says that, you know, there is a safety enough for the for the residents. But again, going concern, I think we should kind of pursue that with the county. Other than that, though, I think my concern has been met, and I would be in favor of approving this.
I think it also makes sense that we don't we don't put trails in in areas necessarily until they're start until we start to see development. We don't know where development will occur, and so some of that does come with the time. Okay.
Just a final comment. Reading the staff report and coming into this, I still had that concern about protecting that property to the south from potential trespassers. But one thing that one thing that I appreciated very much is the Parks Director being here and his comments and the idea that we have statements in the records stating that there have been trespassers. We can see, like, you know, in the future, there potentially could be trespassers. But if we have the conditions stating that it's in the declaration, there's signs, and then a Parks Director made made clear of we don't have precedent from other properties in our whatever 700-plus acres or whatever of property line with any fence, so this would be way out of the norm there. And if there are, you know, actual infractions of trespassing and our police departments getting calls off the hook and that sort of thing, then yeah, I think we'd look at we'd look at fencing. But right now in the record, we don't have enough to justify within our own policies construction of a fence, at least on that on that side north of the park. So I that that was super helpful, I feel to me, and I'm I'm willing to approve this with added conditions and allow this this project to move forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Whitman. Any other comments before we do a motion? Okay. Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, recommend city council approve a zoning map amendment to zone the site from A2 agricultural to R2 low to medium density residential.
Second?
It's been moved by Commissioner Reed, seconded by Commissioner Ellis. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. And we've got one more.
Do you have language for that additional condition?
I just rattled it off the top of my head. Do you want me to do that again?
Yes, please.
Okay. I will make a motion to recommend the city council approve the preliminary plat for Akron Ridge, subject to conditions A through H, as listed in the staff report, with the addition of condition I, to state something along the lines of the declarations for the townhouse development should include directions that residents are not to trespass on the neighboring property to the south and to clearly clearly communicate where the property lines are for the townhouse development.
Second?
It's been moved by Commissioner Keniger, seconded by Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. This item will move forward to city council, I have the date in front of me, I apologize. It'll move forward to city council on March 4th, tentatively planned for March 4th. Okay, that concludes our old business this evening. We will now move on to our public hearing section. The first item on our public hearing section this evening is a request by Danner Inc. for renewal of its small-scale mineral extraction permit for 2025. And Julia, I'll turn that over to you.
All right. All right, so a little overview of the request. So the Planning Commission is being asked to consider a request to renew the small-scale mineral extraction permit for Danner for 2025. The Danner site has been operating as a mine for several years, and the request for renewal is consistent with similar renewals that have previously been issued for the site. So a little bit of update on the site. So in 2024, approximately approximately 25,000 tons of sand and rock was removed from the site, and about 10,000 cubic yards of haulback material was brought to the site. This is similar to in previous years. For 2025, the applicant is anticipating to extract 60,000 cubic yards of material from the site. Testing of the haulback material was completed in January 2025, and results were submitted to the city, which were also a part of the packet for this item. Active mining is showing to continue in the southern portions of Phases 1, 2, and 3, which I'll overview later on in the presentation. And then stockpiling is occurring in the northern portion of Phases 1 and 2. So a little overview of the site location. So the property is located about a half mile east of Highway 52 and about a half mile south of County State Aid 42. The property is about 75 acres in size, and the property is zoned A2. You can see that the Steiner operation is located directly west of the site, and as well as the Bullander and Sons Small Scale Small Scale Mineral Extraction to the east. So a little overview of some aerials. You can see on the left-hand side is August 2023, and on the right-hand side is August or is October 2024. So this is shown on the southern end of the site, where active mining is occurring, which is in the southern portions of Phases 1, 2, and 3. So you can kind of see that they are expanding a little bit to the south in that Phase 2 and 3 portion as well. And then some panoramic images from April 2023 and then April 2024, just kind of expanding on that southern part. You can see Phase 1 is located on the east side, near the main entrance road into the site, and then Phase 2 is to the west, and then Phase 3 is west of that as well. So here's a site plan that was submitted with the application. So again, looking here is to the south, you can kind of see that Phase 1 is located to the east, where some of that extraction is occurring. So the red outline is where that active mining edge is located, that purple outline's where that current excavation area is, which you could see that outlined within the aerial imagery. And then that blue outline is material handling and stockpile area. And then that green area to the north of Phase 1 and Phase 2 is that stabilized topsoil stockpile area. Here's a reclamation plan that was submitted from Danner a couple of years back, just showing the elevation on the southern end of the site. You can see on that northern end towards Dakota towards County Road 42, that's an unexcavated area. Then also here is an image from that stockpiling testing results that we were submitted. So you can see a little bit of that yellow outline right there. You can see that some of that stockpile was taken from the northern portion and also the southern portion. So that stockpiling that was from the haulback material was from Danner sites from South St. Paul and also Madonna Heights that were brought into the site. So here are a couple of site photos that were taken around the area. So as part of part of the mineral extraction process, staff does go to the site and also does contact the police department to make sure that there were no calls or no activity, which the Rosemount Police Department said that there were no calls in 2024. So there is one motion in front of the Planning Commission today. So motion to recommend the city council approve the Danner Inc. Small Scale Mineral Extraction Permit for 2025, subject to terms and conditions in the attached 2025 draft conditions for mineral extraction. If the commission has any questions, I can answer any of those for you.
Thank you, Julia. Are there any questions from the commission? This item is a public hearing item, so at this time, we will open up the public hearing. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item may do so at this time, coming to the podium, stating your name and address for the record. Seeing done, I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
It's been moved by Commissioner Keniger, seconded by Commissioner Bedner, to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, public hearing is now closed. Any follow-up comments or questions before we move forward? Okay, we could entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend the city council approve the Danner Inc. Small Scale Mineral Extraction Permit for 2025, subject to the terms and conditions in the attached 2025 draft conditions for mineral extraction.
Second?
It's been moved by Commissioner Rivera, seconded by Commissioner Bedner. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. This item will move forward to the city council meeting on March 18th, tentatively on March And the next item on our public hearing agenda this evening is a request by River, I'm sorry, by River Real Estate LLC for a major amendment to the Omni Orchards Farm Winery PUD Agreement and a final site and building plan. Anthony, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is, as you said, proposed expansion of the existing Omni operation that is located on Biscayne Avenue. The applicants have purchased the property immediately north of their current site and are hoping to expand into that area with an event center and move the winery production into that building and shift their current product or current space into more beer production. So there's two components to the requests before you tonight. The first one being a major amendment to the Omni Orchards Farm Winery Plan Unit Development Agreement that would expand the area covered by that PUD to contain to include that parcel immediately north. There are no new deviations from the code proposed. The existing PUD did include deviations related to exterior building materials as well as signage. The applicants are wishing to just expand those deviations to the new site so that when they build this new building, it can be consistent in appearance with the current building exterior materials and signage. And the second component would be the final site and building plan for that expansion area, which, as I said, includes event space as well as wine production. So the subject parcel is immediately north of the current Omni operation on Biscayne Avenue. The site itself has been used for residential residential use, and the applicants would be removing the existing corrugated metal pole barn and home from the site, although it should be noted, and I will also note it during the summary of the landscape plan, that they will be retaining several of the significant trees on site. For context of this location, for the commissioners or audience at home that may not be fully aware, this is Biscayne Avenue. On the south is County Road 46, and this is the Rosemount Business Park area here. On the western side of this aerial is County Road 3, South Robert Trail, and then north of this aerial, out of sight, would be County Road 42. Immediately east is the ongoing mineral extraction operation of Dakota Aggregates. So the applicant did provide a site plan that shows several improvements to the site following the removal of the existing pole barn and residential structure. To help orient yourself, the left side of this screen is north, so the existing Omni operation is on the right-hand side. You can sort of see just a ghost of that building. Part of the improvements with this project will be to pave an area that has been serving as an overflow parking, create a connection to this new parking lot that'll serve the event space and winery production building, as well as some additional parking here on the north. There's a stormwater pond that'll be located east of the east of the parking lot between the road right of way and the major improved areas. The table on the slide before you here shows the setbacks in relation to those required by the zoning ordinance. The site plan does meet all the required setbacks for the B2 employment district. Also note, since the staff packet was published, staff did receive a floor plan showing the capacity for the event space to help describe the parking lot requirements, which I will go to in further detail in a subsequent slide here. But as you can see, the building itself will be made up of a few different components, the event room with 252 seats, some production area, a tasting room related to that, and a covered patio on the southern portion of the site. The loading dock will be located at the rear of the building away from the view from the public. So as I said, with regards to parking, with a capacity of 252 guests, that would require 133 stalls. That would be one stall per two people plus seven to accommodate employee parking. The site plan itself does provide 132 stalls, so while technically for this specific parcel, it is one stall shy, calculating the amount of parking available to the south at Omni's ongoing operation there, there is an excess of 26 stalls down in the southern portion of the overall Omni complex that would meet the needs, looking holistically at the site, to allow some overflow parking to the south if needed. So staff does find that the site plan does meet the minimum requirements for parking included with the city code. Here are some exterior elevations provided by the applicant. The the top left one here, this would be the elevation facing Biscayne Avenue, that you can see some storefront windows. On the southern portion of the building would be a covered porch area, and then some brick or some stone wainscoting in the front. The lower-left one is from the rear, showing the loading dock, again, that porch area on the right. And then from the south, you can see the porch area with some doors and windows, and on the north here again, similar materials to the existing building, which the applicant will be using the exact same builder for the for the new structure as well. The applicant did provide a landscape plan. It is a little unique because there is the orchard and winery component to the operation. So the tree tree and planting requirements are shown on that table before you. I would just call out some features of the landscape plan. There would be at least initially 20 orchard trees planted in this area here. There is a windbreak on the western side of the property with sugar maple trees, a combination of maple and honey locust in this northern windbreak up here. And then on the east side of the parking lot is a combination of dogwood, shrubs, and crab apple trees. There's a number of large existing trees that would be retained that vary in size from 10 inches in diameter to 24 inches in diameter. Some newer trees planted here, and then other plantings include some bumblebee habitat flower beds, some hydrangeas in this west. western area, as well as six rows of vines in the northeast. So the only shortfall that needs to be addressed by the applicant, either through the moving of trees from elsewhere on the site to the areas around the parking lot, or providing additional 13 trees in those areas to meet that minimum one tree per 10 stalls within 5% of the parking lot area, which staff interprets to mean the peninsulas and areas around the parking lot. That is included as a condition of approval in the recommended action. A couple other items, without showing you the plans, these are all included in the packet the Planning Commission received, but the trash enclosure will be located behind the building, and the elevations that were in the Planning Commission's packet show that to be constructed of burnished concrete block. The, the commission also received a site lighting plan showing pole-mounted lights at 23 feet in height, along with a photometric study showing the illumination within the maximum allowed by the code. There is no new public infrastructure going to be built with this, as there are sewer and water located within Biscayne Avenue already. Also note that the access into the site will be coming from the existing access that was serving the residential property that is currently there. Omni Civil Engineers continue to work with the city's engineering department to dial in the final stormwater pond design. There are some comments that were included in the memo provided to the commission. Compliance with those is also a condition of approval staff is recommending for the commission tonight. So that being said, staff is happy to take any questions. I know the applicants are present. They are very happy and excited about this project and would love to share some information that staff is not able to provide to the commission.
Thanks, Anthony. I just had a couple of questions. If you can flip back to the, to the layout of the building, which was exciting to see. The 252 seats, is that just the event room though, so that the tasting room could have more people?
Correct, yes.
That our parking only, only counts the 252.
Right, so with the two, the 26 extra stalls based on a code requirement that would allow for an additional 86 restaurant-type use or 40, 52 event gathering, assembly-type uses. So the overage in the parking in the south is enough to accommodate both the event room for weddings and the tasting room, although I would defer to the applicant on how they see those two rooms being used, if it's one or the other versus both at the same time.
Okay, and then I just wanted to clarify, did you say that the, the kind of overflow parking right now at Omni is going to get paved with this as well? And then all of this will be paved, all, all parking will be all paved?
Yeah, so the, these are the paved areas. This right now is currently gravel, that will be paved. There is some additional auxiliary parking on the south side of Omni's current operation. That is the, the right-of-way for a future road that would go into, into the Biscayne business, or into the Rosemont Business Park as a whole. This area just right here, that's being used as overflow parking as needed, but that will eventually be a road, so.
Okay, and that won't be paved?
Correct, the, the point being the city is not requiring paving of that.
Right.
As it'll likely be dug up and reconstructed.
Okay.
And when we talked about the excess parking there currently, that doesn't include that portion that will at one point hopefully go away for the.
Right, right. When I say there's 26 extra stalls on the site, that is not including that, that gravel area on the south.
Perfect. Are there any other questions for Anthony? Okay, thanks, Anthony. At this time, we will open up the public hearing for this item. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak may do so at this time, coming to the podium, stating your name and address for the record. We would love it if the applicant wants to come forward and share anything. Please do.
Hi Commissioners, my name's Zach Ward, one of the founders of Omni, here with my business partner, Justin. And I'll, I'll just share with you what I, what I shared with the Port Authority. A lot of, a lot of this Anthony has already discussed, and I do also want to extend my thanks to the, to the city of, once again, here we are, three years later, going through a lot of the same process and need a lot of the same hand-holding, so. Yeah, in, in 2025, we, we hope to expand our operations. We've been blown away by the support of the Rosemont community. I think there was a question about parking and the winery tasting room versus the event space. Viewing the event space is very much like your traditional larger event venue, probably primarily weddings. The tasting room being a little counter to what we've done in the past, which will be operated as more of your traditional winery. You know, a lot of these operations are 12 to 6, Friday through Sunday, but you get a little more intimate and direct conversation about wine and really wine and wine making being the centerpiece there, where we would continue to operate in our current space, much like we do today with the addition of some beer production on site. I don't think I have anything to add that hasn't, hasn't been discussed already, but happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. So do you foresee that the event center area and the tasting room wouldn't be used at the same time? So we wouldn't have 325 people in there at the same time?
I, I imagine very little overlap, you know? If you're thinking of the traditional wedding reception, getting started at 4:00, 4:30, 5 o'clock, and tasting room operations wrapping up by 6:00, I, I don't see that as a large amount of overflow. We, we also don't know a lot about the winery tasting room business, so we're, we're, we have very modest expectations for sales and, and customers.
Thank you. Obviously, it's the parking issue that becomes problematic if it doesn't meet the parking requirements with all of that volume. Does anyone have any other questions? Opening date?
We would really love to be, have occupancy by October 1st, so, to allow us to take this year's wine harvest in this building. So fingers crossed.
Great. Okay, is there anything else that you want to share with us?
No, just again, thanks to city staff and the city of Rosemont for just supporting us, and it's been a dream come true.
Well, thank you. You run a great establishment out there.
Oh, thank you.
And you support the community as well.
Yeah.
And to many fundraisers. Okay, thank you.
Cheers.
I did have a question for city staff, actually.
Okay, can we, let me close the public hearing and then go to that? Anyone else that would like to speak on the public hearing? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I can.
It's been moved by Commissioner Kenninger, seconded by Commissioner Reed to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
This is more for maybe people listening online, but with the developments happening on Biscayne, I think there's a, I think we approved like that business park south of it. And then in regards to the intersection of 42nd and Biscayne, with people maybe wondering about access and limited, how to get in and out of that road, can you maybe speak on kind of the plans moving forward for that intersection?
Right, so as the commission or the public may have seen, that is now a right-in, right-out intersection at 42 and Biscayne. You cannot cross, and you cannot make left-hand turns. That is an interim improvement that the county has implemented while they finish dialing in their plans for signalization at that site. What that ultimately means is that there will be some realignment, because right now the intersection of 42 and Biscayne isn't an actual perpendicular intersection, it's kind of off a little bit. So the county will be realigning that intersection, so it is an actual perpendicular intersection to create, improve sightlines as part of their signalization of that intersection. The planned timeline for that would be for the signals to be in prior to or concurrent with the opening of the new Rosemont Middle, Middle School.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? This is an exciting addition to, to an already great addition to our county, or to our city. Excited to see it come forward, thank you. And with that, I will make a motion to recommend the City Council approve a major amendment to the Omni Farm Winery Planned Unit Development Agreement, expanding the PUD area to include the property located at 15675 Biscayne Avenue.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Kenninger, seconded by Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. I will also make a motion to approve a final site and building plan for an event space at the Omni Farm Winery located at 15675 Biscayne Avenue, subject to the following conditions listed 1 through 3 in the staff report.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Kenninger, seconded by Commissioner Bedner. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. That concludes our public hearing section this evening. Is there any new business?
None, Madam Chair, that's it.
Any discussion items? No?
No, just a reminder about the.
The March meeting? Yep, so our, oh, hold on, before I do that, the Omni proposal will move forward to City Council on March 18th, tentatively on March 18th. Sorry about that. Our next meetings, we've got March 17th, that is a Monday, it is not our normal fourth Tuesday, so just remember and make note of that, March 17th. And then we are back to Tuesdays for April and May, April 22nd and May 27th. If you have any conflicts with those meeting dates, please let Liz know right away. Jeff, not on Monday?
Almost certainly not.
Okay, so Jeff will not be here on March 17th?
March 17th, yep.
I remembered that. Okay, any other, anyone have anything else this evening before we adjourn? Okay, meeting adjourned.